Order of Mayor and Town Council Work Session for June 16th, 2025. State of Policies. The meeting is open to the public. Public comment will be taken at the end of the meeting. Anyone wanting to speak is requested to sign in and should be a New Windsor resident. When you speak, state your name, address, name and address, and please be advised that your time shall be limited to three minutes. Thank you. All right. The first agenda item will be approval of minutes from May 19th Work Session. You all opposed to email the minutes? Do I hear motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion to accept the minutes. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Good.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, state the affirmative by saying aye.
Aye.
All oppose? All oppose. All right. We will introduce our candidate for the vacant council seat. Our candidate is Josh. I'm sorry, Josh, let me make sure I get your name right. Josh Wolf Mallow. All right. You all have questions? They are in front of you. We'll take this time to do our question and answer session and put you on the hot seat.
I'll get him a microphone for the folks.
Yeah.
You might have to go. This is for the folks online, Josh. They can't hear you if you're not at a mic.
I meant to turn it on, too.
There you go.
All right, Josh. Actually, there are enough questions for us to each ask one. Is that the plan? All right. Councilman Frack, do you want to start the questions, please?
Sure.
Thank you for your interest in the vacancy. Why have you chosen to enter your name for consideration for the open town council seat?
I chose to enter my name just because I think that I could contribute in a positive manner to the town that I live in. I've lived in for a few years now, and I think that it would be an interesting opportunity to learn more about how the town government functions, how it works, and how I could be a part of the town.
Okay. Josh, what is your history of involvement with the town and how have those experiences enhanced your consideration as a candidate for the council?
I am a fairly new resident to New Windsor. I moved in 2022 into Standard Summit. I am part of the inaugural board of the Homeowners Association for the community. So myself and the other board members are responsible for managing and maintaining the HOA and all the budget and funding and rules and policies and the provision of a number of things for our community. And I really enjoyed being a part of that. Thank you.
Mayor, are you going to allow follow-up questions?
Sure.
Okay with everybody?
Yeah, absolutely.
So Josh, being on that board, you know, like for instance, our county commissioners represent certain municipalities, but on the council, we represent the whole town. How do you feel about being able to balance your loyalty to that HOA, to that board, with the fact that you need to represent the entire town as a council person?
Yeah, great question. I think that while I'm a member of Standard Summit, I consider myself a resident of New Windsor first and foremost, and think that we could do great here.
All right. All right, over to me.
Josh, what do you admire or appreciate most about the town of New Windsor?
The thing that struck me the most the very first time we visited back in 2020, 2021 was that it has that small-town charm. It's got a small main street. There's not a major highway flowing through the town. And some people that have lived here for a long time, they think differently about the traffic.
It's where you live.
It's a very small town, and I really think it's a great place to raise your opinion.
Thank you.
I happen to agree with you on that. Josh, what do you believe the biggest challenges facing the town? And how do you perceive fixing them?
Just from my perspective, I've watched quite a few town council meetings online. I think that, you know, as a resident, it seems like there's a number of public works type projects that the town is due for essentially, whether it's the sidewalk curves from that streetscape project, or the public utilities, the water lines, sewers. And there's constantly been major upgrades to that over the years, and I believe that there's still a bit to do in that area. And I think that's probably the biggest expense that the town faces, and certainly in public, and one of the hardest things to get done just because of limited resources and the age of the town's infrastructure.
Okay. Councilman Schultz?
What do you envision for the development of the historic Dealman Inn? Just to make sure you're familiar with what that is.
Yeah, I believe it's this building behind us. I think that the Dealman Inn could be some sort of center, whether it's some kind of coffee shop, brewery, or a distillery, something that could draw, help New Windsor tourism, so to speak, to bring folks to town.
That's a tough one. That's a tough one. All right. I'll circle back. Josh, what ideas do you have to involve residents and local businesses in shaping the future of New Windsor?
Involving residents, I know, can be quite a challenge. I've seen that on my HOA board. Some residents can be kind of eager to play a part, and others could be not. But I think that one thing that seems to help is to give them an opportunity to step in, to give their opinion, to voice their opinion, and to participate in some manner. I think that that can go along the way in helping to encourage their involvement.
Now, you mentioned, I have a follow-up to my question. You mentioned that you were the president of HOA. How many members do you have in the HOA? Do you have, I'm assuming you have 100% participation?
There's 124 homes in the community, and all the members are HOA.
Okay. All right. So it's required that everybody be a part of that. And I don't mean to put you on the spot here, but of the 124 homes, how many of the residents' representatives do you believe, you know, are active? Just in a percentage, is it?
Probably 5 to 10%.
Oh, of the total?
Of the total.
Yeah. It's kind of...
Sounds kind of typical.
Sounds normal.
Like most organizations.
All right. The last question will be given by Councilman Hoffman.
Okay. What are your ideas for attracting and retaining small businesses to create a vibrant downtown economy?
I think one thing to encourage small businesses is making the town accessible, ensuring they have ample parking for their customers, it doesn't have a cost associated with it. And, excuse me. I think that we need to find a way to encourage these businesses, or a small number of businesses to feed the town. And there's recently a coffee shop that opened at the Bed and Breakfast. I think that is fantastic to see. I think that, you know, once word gets out, I think that'll be a really good addition to the town. But I think that making things accessible to, for business owners would probably be another way to encourage them to come to our town. We certainly have the traffic volume group.
Okay. All right. Do we have any other questions? Any follow-ups?
Look, I wouldn't say it's a question, but Kim reminded me when Dante came on board, he had asked about our committees that we're on. And so I just wanted to maybe just read a little bit of what I had provided him. So you may have heard, we all lead a committee throughout time, whether it be public works or economic development. There's, you know, five or six of them. And we're all responsible to be on one of those and lead it. We have the flexibility and latitude to kind of take it where it needs to go, depending on what's happening in the town. And every one of us are a, I don't want to call it a substitute, but we're also involved in another committee, so we're a backup on that committee as well. So we have those other duties as well as our meetings that we attend. And I guess what I really wanted to bring up was, there are some things that we're all hands on deck about, things like our music on the main, the beautification day. Unfortunately, we really try to get the residents involved, and typically, it's the council and our spouses that can make it, and we do it. But we're still working hard to, you know, between the staff, the staff comes, of course, and we try to, we do our best, but we, you know, wanted to make sure you knew that. And then things like, you know, we would have like a water main break, which we had a few years ago. It was all hands on deck. We were all here, you know, over the weekend, whether it was giving out water, knocking on doors, giving out flyers, whatever we had to do. So I just wanted you to know, and Councilwoman Schultz reminded me, that was probably a good thing to let you know, that we have those kind of activities as well as our meetings that we come to town.
Yeah, so it's not just the two meetings a month, like we have the council meeting and the work session, and then there's also the Maryland Municipal League, which has quarterly meetings, right? And we all try to go to those because we get updates from the rest of the county, and then also state officials. And then, depending on your committee, you may have other things that you go to. So for instance, I go to a group called the Carroll County Downtowns Group, and when Kevin had public safety, he was going to the...
Public convention, coalition meeting.
Yeah, so it's just, you know, it's kind of more than just these two meetings, plus you have to read things in between and, you know, come to the meetings with questions. I don't feel like we've done a good job of telling people all of that ahead of time, so I think we need to do a better job saying, you know, it's... And, you know, like the water main break was Thanksgiving weekend, you know, so that was fun. Hopefully, that will never happen again.
I remember that. I think our house was being built then, so I remember seeing the post on Facebook about that.
Yeah, that was fun. But anyway, we survived.
Well, Josh, you stayed, so... I believe you want to continue through that. And as far as a continuation of our process, we've asked you a question, you've done a great job answering those. The next step is for us to go into closed session to just talk a minute or two, and then we'll be back within a few minutes or so with our decision, but...
Do you have questions?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I was going to ask if he had any questions.
Oh, yeah. No questions?
Okay.
All right. Do I hear a motion to go into closed session?
I'll make that motion.
Here, we have one motion. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. All oppose? Okay. We'll be back in a second. Meeting is reopened. All right. I guess now I need a motion for nomination. Do I hear a motion to nominate Josh Wolf Mallow as a candidate to fill the vacant council seat?
I'll make a motion to nominate Josh Wolf Mallow.
All right. I hear, I have a motion to nominate Josh for the open council seat. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor, please stay so by saying aye.
Aye.
All oppose? All right. Congratulations.
They're getting the big bucks now.
All right.
Chair waiting for you. Are you going to need a big name tag with that whole long name on it, Josh?
No, everybody's just got a last name.
Well, I got in trouble because I insisted on Councilwoman. That took up more space.
I still don't have a name tag.
Not I.
Oh, the gripe?
Because it was longer than everybody else's. Because now we're saying member all the time, so...
All right, Josh.
Kim, are you going to stamp a picture?
Sorry, I'm the unofficial...
Joshua, you have to do...
Not on. You're the official photographer.
Just say I will at the end of the reading. All right. I, Joshua Wolf Mallow, do swear or affirm, as the case may be, that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland, the town of New Windsor, and support the Constitution and any bylaws, I'm sorry, and any laws thereof, and I will do so to the best of my skills and judgment diligently and faithfully, without partiality or prejudice, execute the office of council member according to the Constitution of the laws of the state.
I will.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll sign this.
Thank you, ma'am.
Josh, do you? We have to sign that there.
Thank you. Thank you.
I guess we have...
I guess, yeah.
Congratulations again, Josh. Next item on the agenda is review of town policies and procedures.
Unclip the paperwork. Yes, so everybody was sent six policies and procedures to review and just go over. I know there was a couple of questions from the last meeting that I was not at. I apologize. And I believe I answered everything for you, Dave. So just a general discussion, and they would have to pass these, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Since I had some questions with the public works, uniform policy, I'd like to start there, if that's okay with everybody.
Sure.
So I had asked Dana about what we had done in the past for our public works crew because we've required them to wear a uniform, which are town logo shirts, some type of pants that, you know, like a denim or a tactical kind of pant, something durable, and of course, work boots that they're required to wear. And so I know that we have been purchasing, somehow, we've been purchasing shirts and pants and boots. They've been working off some kind of allowance. And to me, that has set the standard that we've been providing them a benefit. So hence, my questions about the amount of money and things like that, because I don't want to take away a benefit that they've been receiving, and if we are increasing a benefit, we need to all be in the realization that that's what we are doing. So that was where my line of questioning was coming from. So Dana had put out a good policy, had a couple of questions on it, and one was the chart. So my understanding is that the town is going to provide each public works employee a set of shirts, whether they choose long sleeve, short sleeve, combination of shirts that we'll have put together with the town logo on them, that we want them to be visible and to see them. So I think that's great. I believe that that is not part of the money that they will receive as their allowance. Because then their allowance will cover pants, they can go purchase jeans, whatever kind of pants they want, and work boots. And, you know, work boots, a good pair of steel-toed work shoes, and maybe insulated ones for the winter, you know, if they can find a pair for $130, they're probably pretty lucky. So that's going to eat up, you know, the amount of money that we have for their allowance. And so that was my understanding, and I think that's great. I think we're providing them what's in line. Dana provided us what other towns do. I think this is good, and I think it's in line with what we did. And then I questioned about whether, why we have different amounts for the public works director, supervisor, and utility. To me, it looked like those that made the most got the most, and Dana answered it, was they did it based on seniority and things like that. I believe that it should be across the board, a set amount of money, because our lowest level employee, his clothes are no cheaper than our highest. Now, I do believe the public works director should certainly get some additional polo shirts and things like that, because he is representing the town in meetings and things like that. So we would certainly want him to have that ability. So whatever, and I'm not questioning the amount of shirts. If it's, I mean, they wear them five days a week, every day they're here, so they need to have a good quantity of them. And whatever Wayne feels like he might need in polo shirts, I have no problem with that. He needs those. But I would think that I would be in favor of making the amount of money the same across all the employees. We went from a low of 400 to a high of 450. Knowing the price of boots and the price of decent jeans or pants, you know, for a whole year, I don't know if we should err on the side of 450 or be in the middle at four and a quarter. I guess I'm open to discussion on that. I would have no problem if it was 450, but...
Talking to Wayne about boots and everything, just so you guys understand, they do usually get summer and winter boots. The summer boots tend to wear out faster than the winter boots because they can stretch them out a little longer. So winter boots, they usually replace every other year, just to keep that in mind, or they're usually replacing summer boots every year, at least once a year. So, yeah. So they would have a little wiggle room every other year.
Okay. So it looks like, I'm looking at the other towns, that four to 500 for the town, other than Hampstead, but they're not paying for uniforms because they're...
They're using Centas, and that's part of their trash as well.
Manchester is 400. Long Island is 500, Tawny Town's 400. So, you know, I'm kind of in agreement with Dave about at least 450.
Okay.
Any other items on that?
No, and then we provide all PPE rain jackets, bomber jackets for winter. I've already kind of started talking to Wayne about that, and we've only spent 2,000 in the budget this fiscal year, and I know we have less than 15 days. So he's going to start vamping up and seeing when we get some stuff ordered before the end of the year, so we're not getting all hit at next year.
Before the end of the fiscal year.
End of fiscal year, yes.
So I did have a, it's probably just a typo, under clothing attire, bullet number three...
If a strong yellow, green, or orange shirt slash outerwear is worn available...
So I think it's...
It's not worn.
It's not worn?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I assumed.
Then a safety vest would need to be worn, yes.
Correct. And then, I think it was, under pants, in the first sentence, it says regardless of weather, shorts, long pants enhance safety and protection of legs. Regardless of weather, I think it's the other weather, the W E A T H, not the weather. And shorts would not be permitted. Correct? We are not, so, okay. All right. So that's all I had on the public works uniform policy.
So to change that, everything to 450 across the board, is that the general?
Well, is that, you guys are okay with that?
It's reasonable.
It's not going to break, is it going to mess our budget?
I've done the math. You're still very, we're well under the allowance that we budgeted for this coming year, so, yeah, we're good.
That's for everybody to get the same amount? Yeah.
Yeah.
And then a little bit more for Wayne for the polo.
Yeah. So without doing 450 for each of them, with the shirts and allowance, it was $2,966.96. We budgeted 5,700 for this coming fiscal year. So we're just adjusting it a couple hundred dollars, so we're still well under.
Great. Thank you.
No problem.
Item two, I believe, was the petty cash.
Yes, we can use that. So this one was just a kind of a revamp of what we had in place. We have very few policies and procedures in place, and that was one of them. So I just upped that from 125 to 150, and since we have a new position of Anne Marie as the part-time receptionist, I've made her in charge of that, and then she just, I just oversee her.
The only, the only thing I think, I mean, it's a small thing, the bank said New Windsor.
Did I not change it?
Oh, yeah, it does still say that.
I will change that to ACMB. She would scold me, I know. I am usually on top of that one.
All right, does that do it for the discussion, or did you have others?
I had one under the employee injury response.
Yes, sir.
There was a lot of discussion throughout there that they need to talk with if something happens, filling out forms, all that kind of stuff, to talk to the town's HR manager, and...
I can change that to...
Who is the town, my question was, well, who's functioning as the town's HR manager, just so everybody...
It would be me, yeah. I can change it to clerk treasure or town manager, if you like, because we're both, yeah.
Or just in case.
Put them both in there.
Put them both, okay.
Just to be safe.
That was all I had.
And then all those documents all came straight from Chesapeake. I was not going to reinvent the wheel there. Okay.
All right, does that satisfy the council? Next item on the agenda is council member committees. I printed out, or actually Dana printed out a copy of the committees. And as I mentioned to some of you, this is a step in the, this is just the first step in the direction that I'd like to see us proceed in terms of our committees. So I'll just go over them briefly. Public Works, council member and chair for that, for the public works will remain, Councilman And then, I don't know what we call the second council member, but the second council member for that committee will be...
Just a member.
Committee member, Josh, will be on the public works. Water and Sewer will be, Councilmember Frack is the chair, and committee member will be Councilman Howard. Public Safety, council member, chair would be Councilman Howard, and committee member, Councilwoman Schultz. Economic Development and Community Relations will be council member...
Mallow.
Josh, I'm sorry. Will be Josh, and then the committee member will be Councilman Frack. Community Enhancement will be Councilmember Schultz, and committee member will be Councilman Hoffman. All right. All right, and a couple of you have mentioned that, we can talk about this for a second or two if you'd like, but we were talking about having some overlap in the committees so that we would make sure that we would cover all of the, any projects... so that we would make sure that we would cover all of the, any projects or items that may fall through the cracks in terms of reporting to the council and the town residents. Does anybody want to expound on that?
Councilman Frack, you go first.
Not to put you on the spot, but.
As we talked about it, if.
As long as we're not stepping on toes too hard, if it's a double-reported item, then it's at least getting reported. You can, I mean, there's certainly going to be overlap on things. Water and Sewer will involve Public Works. Public Works may involve Water and Sewer, it may involve Community Enhancement, Public Safety, that type of thing. So we may need to have discussion on either definitions of certain things or what those boundary items are, some type of classification. But it's, the way I look at it is if two people are talking about it, it's better than nobody talking about it.
Any comments or questions regarding that?
So Councilman Frack's absolutely right in what Will, Councilman Hall did when he was there. He was the one, the. So typically, I meet with the Public Works Department, and they tell me everything they did. And a lot of times, it's installing meters, they're, you know, out there doing stuff that's all water. And they always tell me all that stuff. But if it's water or sewer-related, I always, you know, Will always knew that was going to be his stuff. If it was more Community Enhancement, cutting grass, taking care of construction stuff around town, that would fall under the bailiwick, so we kind of had that. And then, of course, if one of us missed something, we, you know, hey, don't forget that. So it worked out pretty well. So there was, at least in the Public Works, Water and Sewer, there's, you know, the liquid aspect that keeps us separated.
I think we could, we probably, I mean, if we need to, we can, you know, make some definitions for each committee. And I can do that, but I think a big part of it is, it sounds like you're saying there was communication about what we were doing.
Amongst ourselves.
And it does, you know, again, you know, Josh, we mentioned like meetings within, you know, prior, in between our scheduled meetings. They don't necessarily have to be long or, you know, formal meetings, but they, it could be, you know, be as small as a conversation about things that are going on in town amongst the committee, you know, or the different committees.
But.
Without making decisions.
Well, Michelle should do her legal.
Decisions, here I am, as usual, to rain on everyone's parade. But if three of you are in a place discussing business, you are a public body and you are officially discussing business, that's a problem. One of the reasons that we have two-member committees is because it's not a problem because you're not a quorum. If there's three of you, for our new members especially, these folks know that I harp on this all the time. You've got to be very, very careful not to, and even if you don't make decisions, if three of you, if three of you go out to lunch and talk about whether the Orioles are ever going to win another game, that's fine. But if the three of you talk about business things, that's a problem, even if you don't come to any resolution at all. So you've got to be, just keep that in your minds when you're doing these committee meetings or discussions. Another thing that can be problematic is if you're emailing back and forth to see if there's consensus. Once everybody, if you send Dave an email on Monday and Dave answers on Friday, let's talk about it next week, that's not a problem. But if you get three or more of you kind of contemporaneously talking, that is considered by the Meetings Act to be an open meeting, which is not an open meeting because it's not been advertised and nobody knows anything about it. So just, it becomes a habit of thought after I beat it into everybody's head often enough. But just be very wary if there's more than two of you participating in that activity.
Do you want to talk about our communications and how those are subject?
Well, you can talk on the telephone, certainly. But emails that you receive, even if you receive an email from a constituent, I'm here in town and I'm writing you to complain. That is a public record, even if it's not really about anything. If somebody writes to you and says aliens are in my backyard, that is a public record. So that's one of the reasons why everybody has a New Windsor mailbox now. Because for a long time, people had their own private mailboxes, and it was really problematic to try and keep track of those because if you're like most of us, you get 75, and there's two in there that are town business. So that's why everybody now has one of those. Is that what you were getting to?
Yeah, and for instance, I'm the, there's a training you have to take on the Public Information Act, and I took it. So I'm the, like, somebody puts in a public information request, I have to respond to it. Usually what that means is I say, Dana, go find this stuff for me, you know. But recently, we, I'm not going to go into the details, but about a year ago, we had one where somebody wanted to know something specific about something that happened with a councilperson. So we had to find every email that anybody had sent and get them all together and send them to this person. So don't delete things unless they're really, you know, you know, I'll see your dog on Saturday, you could delete that. But anything that's related to town business at all, you have to keep it. So, and it's all discoverable, it's all disclosable. This is not private, we have no private communication, we're elected officials, so.
And if someone sends you an email at home that says, I really would like to see the budget, that needs to be sent to your town email and then sent to Kim's town email since she's the Public Information Act responder. And then she will send it to Dana, and with luck, Dana will know the answer right off the top of her head, like she usually does.
Form is filled out.
But there's a form, there's always a form, you know. It sounds much more complicated than it actually winds up being in practice.
It's just that we have to do these things so that we don't have, you know, so we're just abiding by the act, basically.
Abide by the act. That's my two cents. It's probably about four cents.
That's okay, thank you for the refresher. Okay, does that answer all the questions?
I have two more, Mayor, if I may. So I don't remember, because when I, I used to have Economic Development, and I actually made the title longer, and Mayor Rup either forgot it or ignored it, and it never said that. So is that what I turned it into, Community Relations thing, or is that something new?
That's, that might be legacy. That might be from, that might be what you originally had.
So if, what I had envisioned that as, it was more because, was probably what I would really call community outreach. Because what ends up happening, because I'm the only councilperson who's a manager of the town's social media, in addition to the staff, I post things a lot. So I would like to retain the, at least the outreach function because, so if that's, it kind of goes with Community Enhancement because I'm always announcing events and everything. I don't care, I don't want to take anything away from Councilman Frack. So if he wants to be Community Relations, he can call that, we can just call it Community Outreach on Community Enhancement and Outreach on mine if you want.
I don't have a problem with that.
That's okay with everybody else.
I'm not the Chair of it anymore. It makes sense that it's Community Enhancement, or it's on that.
Community Enhancement and Outreach and Changing Economic Development.
In my real job, Josh, I'm a Communications Director, so I'm always talking about all the community. And I have to do that PIO stuff for my other job.
I wanted to post it on the Facebook page.
Well, it's a combination of the staff and me, but sometimes I actually need to, I told Dana today I need to do a training because we have a couple of new people managing it, and I've got to just make sure they're aware of all that stuff, so.
All right. Any other comments or questions regarding the committee, the committees? All right, agenda, next agenda item is increasing law enforcement presence, Councilman Frack.
All right, so there is a PDF in the Work Session folder. It's also on the screen. I've had several conversations with Master Deputy McGinnis over my time here. He wears many, many hats, and there are certain times of the year that he cannot provide, in his opinion, the appropriate amount of service to the town for what he wants to accomplish here. So there's a program, there's two programs. One is kind of the Resident Officer that Officer Towson used to be the Resident Officer for New Windsor. I think we've had one other since him. And then that program, from our perspective, kind of stopped, and we have just the Community Deputy. So Carroll County Sheriff's Office is still running that program. The costs are on the sheet. I've been speaking with, I am going to butcher his name, Sergeant Tarango from CCSO about this. He is suggesting maybe like a three-month trial period of a set number of hours per month or per week. It's a three-hour per shift minimum. So he was suggesting maybe three hours every other week or three hours a month to kind of increase the presence and see if we get any sort of return. We all know some of the major gripes in terms of traffic. We've got Lambert for speeding and running the stop sign, Church Street for speeding and running the stop signs, including here at Church and High Street, Main and High for speeding, and then College Avenue. Even before the paving, they are flying up and down College Avenue, and now it's worse with the paving. So I just put together a couple possible work schedules that we could take a look at. It is certainly cheaper than sponsoring our own resident officer, let alone getting someone to fill that position through CCSO. But these are a couple options that we could do to proactively add a law enforcement presence if the council wants to pursue that, to try and establish, hey, New Windsor's not just an empty town, we can just fly. This officer would just be scheduled for that timeframe, for that day, for the town. It likely would not be the same officer day after day. And we are able to offer our suggestions on an area of focus, whether it's traffic-related stuff, certain areas of the town. You could get into more of a law enforcement area if we had a trespassing issue or a drug issue or that type of thing. There could be more focus on that, and this can evolve as we go. He recommends reviewing traffic and crime statistics to figure out the best days and times of the day to schedule to have the largest impact. I'm thinking, my personal thought is during rush hour, various days of the week. So it's never on Wednesday at rush hour he's sitting there versus, it could be any day of the week, but at rush hour. So the costs are on the sheet. I broke it down, cost per month, cost for a three-month trial, or cost for the year if we wanted to pursue that. So this is just kind of a thought exercise at this point. Can certainly get more information and pursue it if we wanted to. This would need to go through Town Manager Di to request it and get the contract in place and all that sort of stuff. Maybe Dana could handle it. But that would be at the direction of the council.
So I guess my initial question is, so Officer McGinnis said he can't spend as much time in town because of all these other duties that he has. And yes, I know, because I've talked to him as well. So the question is, does the Carroll County Sheriff's Office have set expectations of what they are supposed to provide us for support? Because they're the ones pulling him away. He's got all these other stuff they keep giving him that pulls him out of town. But they're the ones that said they were going to provide us support. And that support keeps getting less and less. So do they have a set response that they're supposed to give us? Whether it's if he can't do his 40 hours a week, is he supposed to, are they supposed to have someone here 38 hours a week? Or is it, you got him for 20 hours this week because we're giving him 20 hours, and next week, maybe you're going to get him for 15 because we have him at every affair that the Sheriff's Office is going to. So they're the ones that have backed off of providing us this support. You know, our last trooper has slipped my mind.
Calusi?
Yes.
Deputy Calusi.
Deputy Calusi. He was here a lot at the beginning.
And he started doing the same thing.
And he started doing the same thing. And when we went to him, you know, we were, we made that decision because it was at the time, remember, it was about $96,000 a year. It's been a number of years, right? You're up to 130 now. And, you know, Sheriff, I think it was Sheriff Dewey's, you know, and Neil worked, we went into this program, or Sharon, the trooper, and it worked, it was pretty good at the time. And then, you're absolutely right, it's.
So I absolutely do not want to speak for Master Deputy McGinnis. From my understanding, this role is not sought after. So there's not, if we were to pursue someone different, or if they were to place somebody different, because Officer McGinnis has so many hats to fill that time vacancy, there weren't, there weren't many raising their hands for it. So he is concerned that if he were to go a different direction in his career, that there would be nobody for this role. Doesn't sound like it's a scheduled, you're doing this today, you're doing that tomorrow. I can certainly reach out about the county responsibility.
This is not, you know, a Kevin thing at all. It's, what's the, if Kevin decided to take a different route in his career and no longer fulfilled this duty here, what would the Sheriff's Department do? Okay, if nobody's raising their hand, I get it, but what would they do? Just say, sorry, New Windsor, you don't have somebody?
From his explanation, it's sorry, New Windsor. Or it would be vacant until somebody stepped in and took it. Maybe they would force if they didn't have somebody step up, but that was.
Do we have a contract? I don't recall, but that is not to say I haven't seen one. Or if this, was this just a kind of a handshake scenario?
Maybe the mayor could talk to Mayor Rup and find out, but it also sounds like the mayor might need to have a conversation with.
Sheriff Dewey.
Sheriff Dewey.
There's no fee from, like, there's no cost to the town for this, correct?
No, that was the change. When we had Mark Towson, I think it was, I think when we started, it was $85,000. And he was dedicated to our, and then Sheriff Dewey said, this will be win-win, you won't have to pay for it. You just share with Union Bridge. And I think initially it was, but I agree with Councilman Hoffman, over the time, it's, the presence has been less and less and less. And, you know, so, I mean, it almost kind of sounds like we need to back up, and you should maybe see if you can have a conversation with the sheriff and see.
Sounds the way.
I mean, I, you know, you know how I feel about speeding. I would love to give this a try, but maybe we need to do a little bit more background work before we do.
Well, I can certainly start that process.
Yeah, and this was certainly not a, we want to do this tonight kind of thing. It was purely go for more information and everything. So absolutely, we can decide on that or figure that out.
It sure would be a good test case if we were able to target, as you said, hours, you know, rush hour, morning, evening, and see, and, you know, see what happens, you know, over time.
Deputy McGinnis, about a month ago, sat on my corner alley, and within about an hour or two, had 22, 25 stop sign runs. He was just constantly, when he would get back, go out again. He was just constantly, when he would get back, go out again, come back, go out again. So the, you can put as many signs as you want up, if there's zero enforcement, it's not doing anything. So as, as, there's two concerns in town as we know of. One tied for first is the speeding and the traffic situation. If we can throw a resource at it, then that's a big checkbox.
I agree.
That's good information, thank you.
Well, I think that we asked Wayne to, to contact State Highway about another traffic survey anyways, based on the, the change on the hill coming in on 31 and there was some, oh, the, the accident in this corner and Deputy, sent us, McGinnis sent us the de-accident reports, did everybody else get that?
Yes.
Yeah, so we have some, we've got some data to start with and that would be useful, useful for you when you talk to the sheriff too, mayor, but, you know, find out where he's, his head is.
Councilman Frack, I do have a question, you said the three-month fee is what?
That's the trial period that, that he's recommending, just to see if we get, get a result for our money.
Three months at 12 hours per month, one day, three hours per day, is that the 2669?
Yes, yeah, so it's three hours per week, so it would be one day a week you would pick for whomever. And I, yes, there are some months with five weeks in them, this is just the clean way. You would pick, you would have an increased presence one day a week for three months and it would cost you the $2,700. For the three months, 890 per month for that presence. Jumped to four hours per week.
Pretty high to me.
It would be a one-day, one-shift thing, if we wanted a broader coverage, it's a little bit more. Again, my personal opinion, if we were to do a trial, I would want to see two days a week minimum to really establish and make people think that there's speeding or they're blowing through stop signs. Obviously, it's what budget allows and what we can swing and what we feel necessary.
I'd be interested in knowing if the sheriff, I'm sure he's aware of it, but what his thoughts are about this too, mayor, maybe. I mean, I would want us to have a little bit, like, obviously we would have the input of what day it was or days if we picked.
Yeah, and, and he, he has traffic and crime statistics, so if we see, I mean, everybody's leaving early and rushing to get home on a Friday, then you can make it a Friday. Or if it's Monday, because people are dragging themselves to work, then it's Monday and then you can play with it a little bit. I would just want to avoid same day, same time, because then the rest is a free-for-all, because you know.
He's not there.
Right.
All right, I'll reach out. Okay, any other questions regarding increased presence, law enforcement presence? Okay, we have guests tonight. Do we have the names on the list?
Mr. Hicks, I think, this Hicks, am I reading that correctly?
Gentlemen? The microphone.
It's only for the people online, because they can't hear you if you don't go up there.
So I'll, I guess I'll introduce, I'm okay with that, I'm Bob Vicks. I live at 1426 Hollowell Lane, so outside of the town, New Windsor. I've been living here since 2006, my parents, I'm here at their house, I've been a resident since 1988. I brought my son Michael here, he's with Troop 582, which means that the winners live in church on 75. So he's attending one of his mayor bachelor parties tonight for the citizenship of the nation, I believe, I might not be completely, I'm not quite sure. So he's getting a prerequisite out of the way before he goes to summer camp, studying Sunday.
For, for attending the meeting? And.
It has a tenant open, hold it, maybe.
Oh, wonderful, all right, and, and it's Michael, right? Michael, what school do you attend?
Oh, Springdale.
Springdale, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we can actually, maybe in the fall, I think this is when we do this, where we have a shadow day, where you shadow the council members and the mayor. I, I would love to try to do that again this year and, Michael, you might even be able to one-up your fellow SCOTP members and, and take part in that, where you would shadow one of the council members and you would essentially help run the meeting, actually you would help, you would run the meeting as a council member, certainly with the aid of your, your, one of your council, council members. So if you're, if you're interested in that, we'll post, I guess we could.
We have your address.
We have your address.
We only left for a way.
So if you're interested in doing that, we would certainly do it, but I want to wish you the best. And it's, I'm glad that you stepped up and invite your friends, tell them to come too.
We tried to invite his other scouts, they needed us as well.
Yeah, yeah, well.
We just came straight from SCOTP meeting, actually.
Okay, well, you, you, you stepped up and that's actually for the, the best step, because that's the first step, so, all right. Well, thank you for attending.
I'm glad to see that Troop 582 is, is still going strong, my, my son was in 582 when, when he was your age. So that's great.
All right, any, anything else, any other notices or meeting, meeting notices that you'd like the town to know? All right, any questions? All right, in that case, do I hear a meeting, a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
We have one, a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
All right.